Right here.
We'll call this budget hearing to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Foley.
Eric.
Trustee Lafferty.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Crowell.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes, I'm here.
Supervisor Skidney.
President.
Haley, Cassius Walter.
Are we going up with the big one Mason gave us or more racist?
The one I printed just so.
Okay, it's got extra.
I may need to grab my big one.
Yes, do we have a motion on the?
Do we have a motion on the table to adopt the agenda presented?
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table to adopt the agenda presented, all those.
I need support.
Support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
I don't need it.
Agenda approved. This is the first opportunity to public comment, presenting public comment. Please state your name for the record. If you're online, please use the bottom task bar to raise your hand or send a comment so that we can identify and address your public comment. Hearing none, we'll move forward to the business at hand. This being the first budget workshop. We have before us, I believe everybody's on the exact same format. We also are screen sharing off of the exact same proposal that we're looking at. I think at this point in time.
Just what I'm looking at.
That is correct. We're all working on the same thing. I believe we can just continue to go right through the budget, department by department. We'll start with the revenues, obviously. And then we'll just make corrections department by department, staying in the general fund for this exercise. And then for time constraints, we can extrapolate the enterprise fund and the public safety fund for secondary dates. So moving forward. What we have before us are revenue streams. Our calculations are based on at one mill accumulation for our mileage. We're at a revenue stream of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand is the best projection.
And why do we have three hundred and eighty-four?
Oh, sorry, that was actually the number from exact, because we're above exactly, one mil is three hundred and seventy-seven. We're one zero one three six. So that would be accumulation of our exact operating mileage. I guess my my question are, is there any questions? Just tell me, as we work down, just tell me if anybody has any questions by page and I will track along with the board.
Is one mil three seventy-seven or three seventy-one?
Three seventy-seven.
So is that what we're working with?
That is the rate of accumulation per mil based upon taxable value. We're operating, our operating mileage.
So we're.
I thought it went below one.
Yeah.
The L O four two nine is point nine 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 or something, nine eight or something. Remember?
These were from Chris. I can grab them. Because yeah, that was that, but that dropped us down to instead of one point zero one three six, that a six one thousandth reduction. So we're still at one point zero one three zero. We can ask point of clarification.
I'm gonna grab my L O four two nine.
Okay.
While she's doing that, is is swamp tax, is that an acronym for something?
This is state revenue sharing.
No, that's a separate one. Laura, can you?
I don't know that exactly. I've topped my head. I can.
It's specifically called a swamp tax. I think it's the state of Michigan forest. There's.
It's not qualified forest.
It's not qualified for us, but it's, I don't think it's.
We get it from the county.
So.
And I can look, I had.
I thought it related to to state lands within our township board. I thought that's what it was, but you said it's not forest land.
No, I said it's not qualified forest.
That's a difference.
Right.
Tax diverting program.
We get, I had the definitions in my computer. I don't have them right.
Does it depend on what kind of trees are in it, whether it's qualified or what?
I mean, we could Google it.
So essentially, it is a, that area where where the state controls the land, they just essentially pay us some monetary value for that, for that use.
Which has been shrinking.
Yeah, I'm sure.
At least that's my belief based on.
Yeah, and they qualify it for us. That is actually a tax exemption program for through M D R.
Oh, that's, that's where private owners put their property into some sort of tax exempt thing.
It's called.
Yeah, or we all supposedly can use it for public.
One point one.
Nathan was correct.
I was wrong.
I can't believe you did that.
Turn your mic off.
It's apparently a D N R payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah.
Any other questions for clarification?
I just did, this is a small number, but I just noticed that the penalties on taxes are expecting pretty, almost triple.
This was a recommendation from our treasurer and I just plugged it in because I think that's what we actually seen.
We had activity in twenty twenty-one of thirty-eight sixty-two.
All right.
Right.
That's what that means.
Yeah, we'll see that money after.
But twenty-one, twenty-two activity is like only a hundred and seventeen. Well, what's that?
Because we're in that right now.
Oh, okay.
And we don't collect that until.
Till after the tax sales.
Till the, no, until people can pay their taxes through February fourteenth. That's when they're due. Beginning the fifteenth, they get charged a three percent penalty on their winter tax if it's not paid.
So you think that from February until the first of April, we're going to get that much?
No, then it's February fifteenth through February twenty-eighth.
That's what I meant.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, we're going to get thirty-seven hundred dollars.
That's what we did last year. We did thirty-eight sixty-two last year. Your report for that was thirty-three fifty-two.
That's a pretty fair average with the few comparable previous fiscal. Are there any other questions in the revenues?
State revenue sharing sales tax. How? Eight hundred and fifty is what we're proposed for next year. Is this coming from the state that they're saying they're pretty well gonna say we're gonna get that or is that a guesstimate or?
That's from my conversations with N D A, with U B A Allen. The constitutional is looking at a one point nine percent increase. While there's gonna be a slight down dip to the state revenue sharing, but they both come in in the same payment sequence and through the same check, correct Laura?
Yeah, it's a E F T payment.
That is a pretty good ballpark right there. I mean, it's not ever gonna be exactly specific, but that's a pretty fair and safe assumption.
As I recall, that started out way low because everybody thought that there was gonna be a significant drop in state revenue sharing. And then as the, as the year sort of ticked along, that that number ratcheted up rather significantly. For some reason, I'm thinking it was like three hundred and ninety thousand or something like that.
Well, we we talked about it when we were going through that, especially that first year of COVID, because this is sales tax dependent. That, how is everybody gonna accumulate that?
So back to what I was talking about. So this is, we're assuming that they know what they're doing and how much sales tax you're gonna collect them every year.
That's the assumption that our state government knows what they're doing.
What I mean is, so if. They're here to help. If the economy slows down, we're gonna get less.
So it's twofold. There's constitutional, which is a one point nine percent increase. That is known. That was determined through the Department of Treasury. Sales tax is still a derivative of a mathematical equation, and I think that's pretty well locked in by the time, I think, the Department of Treasury meant to kind of finalize some numbers on January sixteenth. And I I try to keep a good line of communication with the Ms. Allen, with M D A, and that was a pretty safe assumption.
And if you notice, if I could, in the last couple of years, for one thing, this is when we raised the sales tax. This goes back to that date when we raised the sales tax in Michigan and lowered some property taxes, right? So it's kind of part of why we get this. But the other thing is, if I'm not mistaken, you you have a physical look, so maybe I'm wrong. But that's my thinking where this derived from originally. The other thing is.
Sales tax derived from World War Two.
Well. Well, that was, but it was four percent or it was six percent.
Yeah.
So, and they reduce some other taxes as a result of that. So we lost some revenue on the property tax side, I think, and, you know, got it here. But the point also is that if you notice, when you buy online, they're doing a lot better job of catching the online sales now.
Well, I was gonna make that same, I was gonna make the same comment, and that, in fact, there is, there is every reason to believe that, given our economy. But that, that number conceivably could be low.
And and that's fine when you're looking at revenue streams. I'd rather err on the cautious side rather than an overly aggressive stance.
It was two or three years ago when you bought online, you quite often didn't pay sales tax, but now.
Depending on the point of sale, if it was in a separate state. So that's what really kind of stemmed the conversation of when we made considerable budget reductions in anticipation that our revenue sharing would have a deficit marker. They actually saw an uptick because of online sales. And then also was the stimulus that was distributed helped keep the the market going. So are there any other questions through revenue trails?
We have a state election this year?
We have two.
We're not budging anything.
We will not get reimbursed for either of these elections. It's part of our statutory duty.
Is there?
We elect the governor for free.
Yeah.
If there's no questions of the revenue, we can move through the revenue into the expenditures. Yes, trustee Paul.
On the second page, administration utilities from D P W. Is that a group thing or is that something that was derived?
And and I'm, now I'm looking, I don't have the hard copy. So what is the G L so that I can kind of?
One oh six two six.
One oh one zero 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 six two six zero four zero.
Admin, public safety, copy that.
No, he's talking about D P W.
Yeah, it's an administrative utilities from D P W. Is that what you're talking about? That's the four thousand five hundred each month of the D P W pays the general fund for all the administrative stuff we do for them.
Okay. But I did not fund it.
You did not?
No, I'm seeing that I did not, because we've also in the year previous.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm on the wrong, I'm, I was on the, I'm, my apologies. I was two G Ls above. I saw admin. Yeah, because last year we actually increased that, I believe, slightly. Last year or the year prior.
Year before.
So.
Wouldn't it be fifty-four thousand actually, forty-five hundred a month?
Russ is spot on with his math. Then I will make that correction to fifty-four thousand. Thank you, trustee Ryan. Are there any questions or any other discussions about the revenue G L after that point of clarification to G L one oh one zero 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 six two six zero four zero? Otherwise, we can hop into expenditures. Which pretty much the first one, I think we're gonna have to come back and revisit as we make our way through the rest of the budget.
So are you seeing the public safety appropriations?
We will have to revisit as it stands currently, yeah. And that is a point of clarification. I would like, given the the certain conditions where we're at, how is, is that gonna have a positive or negative impact with that position in, that should be constant?
Yeah.
Okay, beautiful.
Do you want me to contact?
Yes, please.
Staffing issues, but.
But with the Thunderberry Junior High Liaison Officer, that's now split three ways, right?
That's right. That's where I'm gonna contact.
It's different.
I'll contact the undersheriff and get the exact amount.
Yes.
And then divide by three is up.
I'll find out what our share is gonna be, so we can plug it in.
Trustee Paul.
We aren't losing that officer to the school.
That's what I was asking for clarification, because we're coming into this fiscal for the first time since its inception as a program with it an entire year of service at a one-third cost share. So that number will be reduced. Clerk Palavich will give us an actual figure for one oh one zero 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 nine nine five point zero four zero. Are there any other? Or one oh one, one oh one, this, yes, trustee Paul.
What is the Board of Trustees?
Salary payable, one oh one, one oh one.
Yeah.
Seven, seven, zero, two, zero, zero, zero.
What makes up the Board of Trustees? All of us? The four.
The four.
Okay, just the trustees.
Correct. Yep.
So I thought it was, but I.
Yep. And and that number may be a little low.
That's what I was gonna.
It does look low compared to what we've spent so far this year.
I I will entertain a recommendation.
I would put it more at seventeen or eighteen.
Come on, just do eighteen in hopes that we're high in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wanna go on.
More meetings.
I understand.
Well, the activity in two thousand twenty, twenty-one was nineteen thousand.
It was.
So to go to eighteen thousand is unrealistic.
Yeah, when when you're looking at the the activity levels of nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two. That's, I was just, I was a little low on my my average, but eighteen is pretty much a rough aggregate there.
But these other numbers I have to change too, I suspect.
And so to that, I guess I'll look to the calculations for social security.
We can do that.
Yeah. Yeah.
At a different time instead of spending the time now.
Most definitely. Agree. Because then what I I will be doing, because we're working currently, going through the proposed making the recommendations. So the changes that I have, as you can see, are highlighted. I will, if there's been no changes that we've discussed as we work through this, I'll be inputting transferring the same from proposed to recommended.
Can that be made a little bigger or less?
No. And I'm.
I just wonder.
Can we make it the full screen or do we have to have us in there?
Oh, I can't do it from my.
I mean, I'm really young and I can't see that.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah, it doesn't help.
You're comparatively.
I can't read it, so.
Oh, and you're the.
And he's the baby.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My baby can't read it.
It's like my. My daughter came home from kindergarten. Or actually, before she went to kindergarten, complaining about her, her younger brother couldn't read yet. What's wrong with him?
She was so fancy.
Are there any other recommendations to one, Department one oh one, Board of Trustees?
Well, if we use eighteen, the comp would be thirty-six bucks.
Are we sure?
Trust you on this, trustee Lafferty.
No, never trust me.
Copy. So I got a work comp at thirty-six dollars. Do you have any other of the ancillaries that you would have off? We can always, like Clerk Palavich stated, we can always.
We can always do a social security, Medicare, John Hancock. All those we can.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'll let that be a sidebar. We can just plug them in because they are what they are.
Yeah.
Trustee Foley.
Transportation and travel, horse conventions.
Schools and conventions. Currently funded at five hundred dollars.
That means if anybody wants to go to any M T A things, we have no money benefit for our budget for that.
First five hundred dollars.
I know, right? Currently, yeah, limited, but I'll entertain a.
I think now that we got COVID going, right, we should start getting more active than that.
And there again, if you have a recommendation, we can, I'll plug it in.
Well, I was looking at this and I just. I don't have a recommendation, something we can talk about if you want to talk about it or move on.
Well, I I have no problem implementing, putting more money in there, but it's just.
I don't even have a thousand in there.
For schools, schools, conventions, one oh one, one oh one, nine five seven zero zero zero.
Just one other thing on that. Is anybody thinking about going to the convention?
I've thought about it for five years.
I've thought about it for eight or nine.
It's in Lansing this year.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is somebody's thinking of going, there is nothing there. And I don't know if we can even.
Do you know how much it is?
I don't.
Sign one person, I think it's about three grand by the time you figure everything.
Is that right?
Well, you got room, you got, if you're gonna go for the convention and sign up for the convention.
I.
That might be minimal, I think.
And honestly, at this point in time, especially with our budgetary concerns, I think that that would be a conversation best had for next budget cycle.
I agree, but I just wanted to bring that up.
But I agree with that. We could put a little bit more in there because there are smaller one-day conventions and online things that we could, we should probably start investing in.
Or the, on the roads.
Yep.
I see things in here that are also under each of the full-time positions, things like legal transportation and data processing. Those are allocations that we apparently make. How do we determine what amounts are allocated to each, you know, like the Board of Trustees, Supervisor, the Clerk, the Treasurer, I mean.
Well, like for data processing, B S and A, I get charged the accounts payable and the payroll module, whatever that annual cost is. Laura gets charged.
For tax, dealing with personal property and special assessment.
Then there's one for assessing, there's one for buildings.
And then we have general ledger and we have cash.
Legal, that's a more general thing.
You're talking about legal?
Just a general question, I just wanna know how.
When I allocate.
Percentage that have been adopted.
No, I look at the bill every month when Tim gives it to me and determine which charge goes to which department.
Really?
I have quite a spreadsheet if you ever want to see it.
That seems like way too much busywork.
Well, and that was honestly, that was reafforted by the fact that we tried to make it a streamlined legal singular G Ls for function, and our auditor said they have to be broken out by department.
The auditor said that.
And didn't we also decide that from the lion's share of our legal was going to be just borne by the.
Board of Trustees.
By the Board of Trustees.
Most of it goes to the Board of Trustees.
So even though.
Times like, oh, your request, if I need Tim's help, I'll charge that office clerk's office. Laura's had questions on that stuff.
Planning Commission, super, everybody has the potential, but oftentimes.
Assessing is used quite a bit this year.
Yeah, because of.
The auditors, that seems like a make-work-for-you and a make-work-for-that.
But they do specify in the bill, you know, clerk, treasurer, supervisor.
Doesn't B S and A also require it to be broken out pretty well? Not really.
I there's.
We get to decide how we want B S and A to be.
Numbers, those income.
Yep, gotta love them.
Yeah, we didn't do it one year and it was quite a job at the end of the year having to do it.
Into, are we done with the Board of Trustees? G L?
Yeah.
Okay, moving forward into Department one seven one, that would be the Supervisors Department. Yes, trustee Paul.
Actually, what is this forty-nine five, is that your salary or is there something else stuck in there? Because I looked at the other salaries and there's numbers all over the place.
Um, that is a salary. I put three percent from this year. That's, I believe, what it came out to be. No, no, because I take, I currently am taking the health insurance. That would be the only other thing that would be a potential inclusion to the salary.
Right, we'll see when we get to.
I did fund this year my department, computer hardware, because at some point in time I've, my laptop is now five years old and that sunset is probably approaching. But any other questions about Department one seven one? Seeing none, we'll move on to one nine two, which is just a professional contractual we never use, and then forward to two fifteen. Two fifteen, seven, zero, two, zero, one, zero.
Back to yours, Nathan, just for one quick question. Under equipment and furniture, do you plan on buying some equipment or furniture?
I I would potentially like to actually buy a desk that's not made out of two file cabinets and an office door.
I get it. We all get that. We all understand.
I think historically, we've always started, just about every of the primary department starts out with that allocation. And then about halfway through the year, that gets reduced to zero because there's other departments and or other needs. So yes, at one point in time, maybe I'll explore, as I have for the past five years, the potential of attending the M T A annual conference. But maybe get rid of the the office door desk. It's done me well so far.
So do, would you want to increase your schools and conventions if you want to empty?
I'm, in this budget, I don't want to because it's, we don't have the means to. It, it's not likely. I have a thousand dollars in there, of which that could potentially be a redemption. So.
For schools and conventions?
Yes.
Here's where I have a question. The clerk's salary is thirty-four thousand.
No, no.
No, that's the clerk.
Administrative assistant.
Yeah, don't, don't worry, I I've.
I made the same mistake.
Okay.
So are we good with Department one seven one? And then on to Clerk two fifteen?
Wants to change that stipe in the middle.
Yeah, so that there are some. Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a couple, couple employees that will be.
What is that for?
That's the deputy stipe.
You're two fifteen.
Which consists of.
A thousand dollars right now.
Why?
Deputy, clerk, Deputy Treasurer are statutory positions that need to be filled.
And it's a lot more.
Okay, so then what's the clerk, what's the clerical salary payable at thirty-four?
That's like the, like Haley's an administrative assistant. Her wages are the thirty-four thousand. She gets another thousand a year right now for being the deputy clerk.
I got you. Okay, so basically it's thirty-five thousand is her salary.
Correct.
Okay.
Does her salary include her coming to our meetings, like?
Yes, she comes, she she gets paid hourly. So like when she's here late on Monday nights, we work out her schedule so she either leaves early one day or comes in.
So she gets some impact, okay.
Yeah, except during elections, it's overtime.
Trustee Paul.
I'd like to point out something, the health insurance, to give an idea of what we're paying for it. Not picking on you, show, but your health insurance is thirty-four thousand and your salary is forty-eight. It's like, it's just what it is with your family, but what? It's just what it is with your family, but what.
Part of this Haley's health insurance too.
Yes, for the.
We're just, we're. Just cross the board.
Excuse me, what was that trustee Reiner? The wind was up and I did not.
That's, it's a single family instead of family plus a single. Your number's probably closer.
My family's probably the highest because I have the most people on the health insurance.
And I, I have three.
And Mike and I are all sources.
I love.
My best friends will.
Are there any other questions of?
Nathan, on data processing, I'd like to add, make that three one hundred, because I'd like to get the, um. Professional PDF. Program.
Okay. So you're recommending an increase from?
One oh one to one five nine five six.
Zero, zero, zero.
Data processing from twenty-two hundred thirty-one.
Okay. Are there any other? Any other discussion about department two fifty? Seeing none. Department, uh, two four seven.
Is it safe to say that we're just pretty much plugged in?
Board of review, we pretty know how much they're going to meet and it's.
This is, yeah, this is a, is cookie cutter of a department. Five, five days total plus a prep day. Uh, it's, it's a pretty well-known.
I'd like to go by the treasurer's line.
Okay.
So. So we, if there's no questions of, uh, two four seven, which is board review, uh, we'll more move our way to department two five three. That is the treasurer's department.
I would also like to add that PDF data processing software for my, my office up front too on my computer.
There you have.
That's about three hundred.
So that's two five three nine five six.
So your recommendation is to increase three hundred dollars, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty-three hundred.
Fifty-three hundred.
Copy that.
It's just. Working on, I just think it would be nice to have that for sure.
Well, I, I forget, do you, do you take a, a? In lieu of health, okay.
Yep.
Was that three hundred a month?
Yes, trustee Paul.
I guess I need to be corrected again, but I'm looking at the salary payable for the treasurer. That's fifty-two one.
She's got, gets the luau. That includes three thousand six hundred.
Is that an appropriate place for that to be? That's, that's fully taxed, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I take it there must be, what, two other people on the health insurance?
Uh, yes.
Yes, Rhonda.
Rhonda's family's on it.
Okay, any other comments on, um, treasurer's department two five three? Moving forward, uh, to department two five seven.
So now, we know we have a.
You just talk whenever you want.
I didn't see your hand.
No, I didn't that time, but.
All right.
Trustee Lap. Do you have comment on, on department two five seven or clarification on two five three?
Is there, uh, the salary that we have for the assessor? Is that contemplating a, a different? Do we have a retirement coming in or no?
He's retiring April first. This number would be based if he was staying.
Okay.
It's the three percent raise he would have gotten for his contract.
Trustee Paul.
Have we, or is there anything being done in all this meeting for that, before a replacement for?
Conversations have already been taking place at the personnel committee level, yes.
That's something that's gonna come with the board eventually.
There most definitely will be, um, some, uh, board discussions at an upcoming meeting. But for this purpose, right now, we're just following status quo. With three percent. Any other clarification needs or comments on assessing department?
Did the HSA go down quite a bit for them, for that?
Chris cannot take this say because of his age.
Okay, gotcha.
Moving forward.
Three, I'm sorry, three hundred or three thousand for computer hardware? Do they need new computers? Or?
I put that in there because there's, there's a lot about this department that is going to be fluid.
Going to be what?
Fluid. There's gonna be upcoming conversations, so.
More of this, we'll settle with a later date.
Correct.
So we can just kind of move on.
Yeah.
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 So again, any, any other questions on assessing department two five seven? Not, we'll move to two six two and this is, uh, elections.
I just want to make a couple of changes because I rechecked my figures on this. For election training, every one of my election workers has to be trained this year, so I'd like to change that to two thousand five hundred. It's the very first one.
Two six two, seven zero two, zero, zero, zero.
Salary table, tables, I'd like to increase that to twenty-two.
Twenty-two hundred?
Twenty-two thousand.
Two elections.
There's two, there's the August primary and the state general.
Did you change the election training amount to?
Yeah, to two thousand five.
Twenty-five hundred.
Quick calculations for social security Medicare.
So, any other recommendations on, uh, elections?
Yeah, there was, um, operating supplies. To major elections, I'm going to need a total of at least ten thousand in there.
Are any of these costs recoverable?
No, they are not.
That stinks, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Because the last one did.
Anything else to be had about, uh, two six two elections? Yeah, okay, um, moving on to department two six five. Any questions about two six five?
We've talked about. We talked about having a full-time maintenance person other than you guys. Any proposal there?
We put the ad out for a part-time and never received one applicant.
Not one.
So.
And we're still where we were.
And that's still, it's still on our website too, I believe.
We are still.
How did we fund that? What was, what was our?
DPW was gonna fund it. There was money in last year's DPW budget for it.
Okay, but I mean, what, at what level did we fund it when we put it out? Did we have a number that we offered people?
It was fifteen something an hour because that's what the contract said for that position.
Pretty big increase on bypass maintenance.
We're. No, that's actually been consistent at fifteen. Uh, we know that we have a project coming up this season that's actually gonna eclipse that.
What project do we have coming up?
Well, we have to utilize our thirty-two West. We have partially funded through insurance and then we have to make a determination. Of design and character of.
I'm talking about the lights.
The lights. Correct. So this may, and this is what, uh, you and I spoke to, to Larry about in terms of that expenditure of coming over the next year or two.
But we already, are you talking about the lights on the sides of it, like the side block, the bypass lights?
The blue lights, right?
Correct.
The lights.
That we pay, but don't we have another GL for the lights?
That, no, that is street lighting.
That's an electrical bell.
Yeah.
Okay, so this one is.
The physical lights.
Oh, to replace the poles and the lights, I gotcha, okay. Okay, so, okay.
Have you seen some of them?
Yeah, and those costs, we had one cost for, for the benches. Okay. So yes, the ones that weren't hit on cars, but let's just keep one, one discussion at a table at a time. That way we can, uh, chop through this quickly before. Copy that. Um, but yes, that, that is the clarification to the bike path maintenance. Um, it's a sizable number, but a, a drop in the bucket, I think. That quote that we've had is probably close to double, but we had some insurance to offset.
Why would we have some insurance? Is, is, is it because we have to match up the rest of them or something?
No, well, because the, so we've had.
Couple of car accidents.
We've had, we had a string of.
Do we know who they are though?
Yeah, it's already.
We got the money.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you and I talked about. Well, because the, those lights are all daisy chain and so what the damage occurred only extended. To X amount of linear feet of that line. So you can't just put in the claim for total replacement on the entire lighting system when only. I mean, I asked you as an insurance guru of sorts.
Well, I tell you what, every time.
If we.
If lightning hits a one light at the airport. A hundred of them go out because of the same reason. We've replaced a hundred of them.
Well, then that would be something to explore in, in the claim process. So if we can get your assistance on that, I would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah.
So maybe we're properly funded. You, you can walk through, Ms. Mills. Um, any other questions about buildings and grounds? And before we get that far, uh, for the rest of the board, uh, we, we have with us in, in front, uh, Helen Lizzie Mills. In person.
Wow.
Hello.
Hi.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Drive safe.
Okay, um, moving forward, any other questions, comments of buildings and grounds? Um, thi- this is also gonna be, I think, some of a, a very fluid department because I think we'll be having, uh. Some conversations as we work through our joint CIP meeting and the potential discussions of. How we choose or plan to utilize the, uh, ARPA distribution. Um, and some of these costs can be, uh, defrayed using those dollars, so. Attention.
Yes, could I, how long have these benches and lights been?
The benches and the lights were put in on the westward expansion of the water and sewer infrastructure. I'm trying to think of.
She's fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
So life expectancy.
Well, and then the unfortunate reality with, uh, the lights that are currently in place, we have lights and ballards. Um, one who is all. A horrible design. Um, because they actually catch and keep water. In the light, uh, unbeknownst to myself, until the first car sheared one off and left it several properties later. Is that those light poles are actually cast in fiberglass. Um, which.
Probably better for collision.
It doesn't hold up well to afford F-150 at fifty-five, sixty miles an hour. That seemingly to my calculations with the wheel didn't even touch the brake for about six hundred linear feet. As went through a church fence and parking lot where redistributed the light.
Very cautious driver.
I'm sure she had her blinker on. So, that being said, uh, any other? Questions on two six five, because it stands currently. If not, we will move down to, yes, trustee Paul.
I'm just curious, uh, we did nothing. For this year, we projected thirty-eight and done nothing, so I guess. Uh, that money's still laying out there.
Would you like that? We've actually been.
Put more money in there.
Redistributing money and that's what you see is the forty-six, seven fifty-six. Is the activity that we've actually been able to, um, put aside into an account.
Have forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five, seventy-five in there right now. When we have found the GLs that we have put too much in, part of our budget adjustments where we added to that capital outlay.
And this is in correspondence to a revolving, uh, savings account, so that these are real funds.
These are real money that we put us up.
This is, yeah, well, we need to get the savings account to put it in, but yeah, we have, it's money that we have, but we had budgeted for other things that we have saved and put in here.
That's the sock money.
Sock money. Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, did, uh. So that. That is essentially a savings account for, for a potential thirty thousand dollar expenditure. Where, where's the in, where do we show it as a, as a closing number?
Right now, it's, we don't have it like cash somewhere.
Okay.
We need to write a check and put it into a checking account somewhere by April first.
And will that show as a, a revenue?
It'll just show that we've transferred it from our general account checking to a savings.
But you're looking, you're, I think you're talking about a balance sheet, which we don't have here, we just have a budget.
Yeah.
So we would, we would.
So this is.
Report at our level, all of us, of a balance sheet.
Right.
Financial report. I don't know how often we should get that, but at least we should get it annually.
Yeah, so we're, we've been actually trying to get there for five years. We're, we're pushing that envelope this year. And, um, to, to set aside so that we actually have not just a fictitious fund balance, but we're actually squirreling away. Real numbers. Currently, we're at forty-six and I'm rounding because BSNA likes whole numbers, uh, forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars as it's represented in that. It should be right to the left. On that same GL line. We have it.
Because we've made budget adjustments.
Yeah. Yeah, so s- some of those numbers I produce, I, I did produce this, uh, legal size. Yeah, on January eleventh, so it is not, it doesn't update to all the, the budget adjustments we've made between the eleventh and today. But the numbers that were proposed are sound and have not changed. Um, moving, uh, forward to, um. Department two seven nine, we have, uh, banking fees for the general fund. Is this high or low? What is your anticipation?
Probably a little low.
Trustee Reiner.
Banking fees, what do they consist of?
Laura, would you please?
Like, uh, account analysis fees that the banks do, um, they charge us for. Using the remote deposits at the end of the day that we run the checks through, they charge us to go to the bank and they process the cash. They.
They charge us for taking the cash? Wow.
Yeah.
We do that, have to do that.
We, we take the cash to the bank, but we process, we run the checks through a check reader. At the end of the day, instead of taking a stack of checks like this to the bank, for them to do it, we process it here, it's in their bank faster.
I can do that with my own account at the credit union, make, take a photo of it and all of that.
Well, they would still charge us whether we do that here, take it to the bank.
I, I guess my point is.
It's a part of the banking.
Oh, you want to give us money, it's gonna cost you.
Is every bank doing that? I guess.
Same question.
Both of our banks do it.
We've put it out into different banks since I've been here and asked and.
So your recommendation would be an increase from two thousand dollars?
Maybe even to twenty-five hundred, just to. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, that is the only function in two, seven, nine, moving forward to, uh, Department three, three, zero. Charter conversions.
I know.
Yes, please.
Trustee Paul.
Who are we paying for that right now for salary?
Ruth Braun is half, so half of, uh, field appraisal uh, in the assessing department and the other half of her salary comes from a state distribution for liquor inspector.
So is this a mandated service that municipalities have to provide by the state?
We get reimbursed some money from the state, don't we?
Yeah.
I guess years ago, per Kelly, it used to be under the supervisor's department, not that the supervisor did it at the time. No, but it was on, like, prior, way prior to you.
Cut you a deal on the fee.
Well, too, it's not anything like the banking world. Um, so this was just, uh, showing, uh, a three percent as every employee across board. Any questions about three, three, zero?
Just one, on the, uh, so, so this person uses their own vehicle to, uh, drive to and from various places that have liquor licenses, just to, just to make sure it's on the wall and.
Go, there's a.
Yeah, I understand. And so is the travel, transportation, is this person reimbursed per mileage?
By the federal rate?
Yeah.
And, and we pay that? It's not reimbursed by the state?
We get ten thousand dollars, it looks like, from the state, if you look at line item, one oh one, five, seven, two.
Yeah, it's not a complete reimbursement, but.
Oh, yeah.
It offsets costs, defrays it.
All right, so that five hundred dollars therefore would be reasonable, given the size of a township.
It's right.
It's only in the township, nevermind, I was thinking of the whole county, but nevermind.
And they, are they some, I don't know if it's under this person or not, but they sometimes will take a, a couple teenagers and they'll go around to the bars or, or package liquor stores and see if they can make buys.
That's actually the state function.
Yeah.
That's a different department.
It's not done by the local.
No, I don't.
Liquor control.
I, I don't think that the charter township of El Pina needs to be sneaky Pete. Well, that is a function of the state, though. They do bring, like, tobacco and liquor sales. I know that if they will do little fun activities like that sporadically.
Cash is to do that.
So, that, that being said.
Yeah, but he, he was serious, he was, he was wondering to get it.
So liquor enforcement is, is effectively reduced by ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It works a lot.
So moving forward to three, seven, one.
So the clerical payable, I mean, that's Lynn.
Correct.
And then where, where do we pay, um, Kevin out of?
Professional.
Professional and contractual.
One oh one, three, seven, one, eight oh one.
Zero, zero, zero.
Was there some discussion of making him an employee?
We have not bridged that conversation, I think, due to his private interests and time constraints. That, I mean, the door is always open for conversation.
Well, the, I only asked the question because it'll bump our costs in many other areas too.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, any questions, uh, Department Building, uh, Building Department, three, seven, one?
Their office plays really went up. Twelve hundred. No, I'm just, no, I'm just looking back at previous.
I mean. She's barely gonna make it through at seven fifty.
One, one more question.
Yes, sir.
On the, uh, so that I can calculate a couple of other things properly, professional services. As I recall the agreement, uh, he is absolutely considered an independent contractor with the exception of his duties that he performs as, that sort of that statutory duty. But that's where the, that's where the township is, is assuming his liability as it relates to his, uh, duties. But, but he's otherwise an independent contractor for all areas, right?
Correct.
Including workers' compensation.
Including workers.
But he does not carry workers' kind. He does not have it.
I, I understand, but, but, but we've got him, we, we've had him sign the appropriate contracts and statements, blah, blah, blah.
I think he approved his contract.
Yep, we did.
Yes.
Do we have, so it's a forty-eight thousand dollar contract? Is there another source of income through us that he gets in addition for other work?
Nope, nope. Uh, it's, uh, the last iteration that came before the board was four thousand a month and that absorbed, under his licensure, now that he's a building official, having, uh, Don Gilman under his license. Um, and so I believe his, his monthly dispersion, well, will be four thousand, then he's paying from his own. As a subcontractor and paying for Don's services.
Are we using him for light?
Yes.
And, and that's part of the.
I've, yep, yep, I got him in, uh, zoning administration, so I, he and I have been working on looking at doing site plans, um, zoning enforcement. So I know that I disforwarded him a, a, a light concern just yesterday, that he's looking at today, so I'm.
So is it in, in, above and beyond then?
No, it's within the contract scope that we expanded when he wanted to increase his distribution, then his obligations increased as well. Because that's part of what I'm doing, that's not. Part of my, my three percent. Love my community.
So you're three percent.
So anyways, are there any? Any additional questions going through?
I just, is there the increase for, um, Bruce and Frank? Because we think that the building that we're gonna be doing, I did look at that and it looked like it once, like we anticipate more revenue going into next year for that reason, so that would affect.
Well, and if you look at just the budget adjustments, I think we're actually conducting right now. This co-aligns with our revenue streams and what we're seeing year to date.
Yeah, I've noticed those numbers.
Yep.
So when you figure these for buildings, uh, yeah, for. Did you take whatever we thought the revenue was gonna be and take eighty percent of it to get these numbers?
That's what I tried, I think I may have you seventy-five, I mean, but it's.
Because they get paid eighty percent of whatever.
Yeah, yep, yes, trustee Paul.
So salary payable, that's Lynn.
GL.
I'm sorry, building inspector.
What is the GL? Three, seventy-one is Building Department.
That would be Lynn's.
Okay, that's one salary, so the twenty grand is for, for health insurance.
Yes.
Yep, she's the sole, uh, employee that's covered with Blue Cross in that department.
Oh, okay, you guys were already on three, seventy-two, is that what you're talking about, Frank?
Well, it's just, there's two subcontractors outside that are within, but outside the scope of Kevin as, uh, professional subcontractors, and that's Frank Rosensky, who, uh, does the electrical inspecting work for the vast majority of the county, and then Bruce Stillinger, who is our mechanical and our plumbing inspector, also performs those functions for a vast majority of counties. There's no other questions going to, uh, the Building Department, we will continue to move forward. To Department, uh, it's in four, four, six, after the special assessments, uh, the first GL that, uh, is highway, streets and bridges. Will actually have to probably come back to this, uh, in direct correlation to, uh, the transfer from general fund to public safety. Because this is the GL that has afforded that flexibility to our public safety fund. So we can come back to that after we go through that department.
And that's the road commission projects.
Correct. Yeah, that's how we fund our activities with the El Pina County Road Commission. Coming into this fiscal year, their match is, uh, still just above, uh, a hundred and ten thousand dollars at fifty-fifty match. And then outside of that, we've always entered into an annual agreement for dust control, uh, which is a rough number, twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, just so that you have a point of reference for previous utilization of funds. Any questions? Because like I said, we will be coming back to, uh, this as part of a conversation, so. Getting into, I believe, six oh two is health and welfare. Six oh two?
Yes, I have a question, I'm the Chamber of Commerce.
Correct.
Why do we have thirty-five hundred? I mean, even to get us at chairman level, we'd only need three thousand, two hundred and one. And do we feel we have to be at chairman level? Could we do partner at fifteen hundred?
I, I think thirty-two oh, I just put thirty-five, this is a rough aggregate, um. Yeah, I, I, I feel that it properly represents us as a municipality to be at that level. Um, because outside of, uh, the work that I try to do in terms of economic development, um, this is the principal organization that helps kind of bridge that gap, as Target and Chamber are kind of one. Um, although they're two, um, separate entities, uh, for, yes.
Do we fund Target separately?
No, there, we, we distribute one check. Chamber actually splits out funds accordingly, uh, for that function. But it would be my recommendation to remain at, at that chairman level, at three thousand, two hundred and one dollars.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, uh, we, we don't wanna step down.
I think just the advertising that we get alone is a good thing, um, and how else are we, it's, it's a good bridge mechanism, uh, for current businesses and for, um, I know that I've been working hand in hand with, uh, Mr. Moller through Target, um, exceedingly well over the past couple of years. Um, and I think it's, it's, it's a good step in the right direction to remain at that, at that level of, uh, three thousand, two hundred and one dollars.
My, uh, thoughts are the same, th- this is, uh, this is an expense that pays for itself.
Um.
So should we change that to thirty-two?
I did, as you'll see, I changed it to thirty-two oh one, to this year's current.
I have another point, but if we're done with the change.
I believe we are at this point.
North Point Shores Road Assessment, thirty-five thousand is what we collect each year. They have not spent ten thousand, five hundred and six of what we collected last year, so shouldn't that be rolled over into what's available to them, so we have a running balance of what their money is?
Then please, by all means, tell me what that balance should show.
As of right now, it should show about forty-five thousand, but that could change if they send, submit bills between now and April first. So this, it would be something we'd wanna adjust April first.
Is part of that for like maintenance of the road, like snowballing?
Yeah, snowballing.
Pretty light this year.
Well, and that's why we actually, it came before this board, uh, to extend, um, the special assessment uh, for North Point Shores for two years. Um, I think their anticipated end goal is to harden that road surface. I know that in this fiscal year, they have actually, uh, were approved through the Army Corps of Engineers and Eagle uh, for a cross culvert of considerable size for, um, water dispersal, uh, from the, the small inland lake and creek, uh, that is on, which be, would be the, the east side towards Misery Bay.
Miserable.
I'm not saying a word.
But, so they, they, they've been working towards that, so they, they anticipated. I, I think that it was a little short sighted to go such a short term on a special assessment, given the fact that the administrative function in-house for special assessments is, um, far from a bundle of joy. Um, but that's what we're looking, uh, trustee probably had it up first rule.
Uh, basically, we're just collecting money for them. Whatever they want.
Correct, we're just the fiduciary.
Yes, and we will be, um, getting a percentage for our admin fee this year, be the first year.
The first year that we've actually incorporated.
So is that in here somewhere, or should it be?
Well, and that's why I, I, I look to a recommendation, because I don't, I just.
I forget what the percentage is.
I'd have to double check our.
So would the recommendation for the, the North Point Shores, uh, road assessment be forty-five thousand dollars, just as a rough number?
Just as a rough number right now.
And then we can check on that and then figure out.
Yeah.
Um, I had a, a repeated quest, um, from the Long Lake Association, uh, for a thousand dollars. That's a. Don. Very nice gentleman, sends us a letter, they do, yeah, pray tell.
Kurt.
Kurt, pray tell, this, this. They do, um, they, they, they plant fish, they do, uh, fish habitat in the lake, and then they are also, um, help facilitate, uh, log, uh, jam removal on, uh, Long Lake Creek, uh, downstream from, uh, the Weers. Yes, Laura.
Um, are we done with Long Lake Association? Okay, I just wanted to point out, um, recycling and cleanup day, electronics day, um. Things are changing a little bit in that recycling world, um, so we do plan on having a cleanup day and electronics day again this coming year. Electronics Day, um, hopefully Hewlett Packard will sponsor it, so that will be taking care of more of the second one, but the cleanup day, I do feel that we should put some money aside to if.
Well, that, that is the conversation at that table because of the current scenario with, uh, the provider.
Right, that it's gonna probably end up costing each of the township some money, um.
And then one Stan sends us a proposal for a contribution. That was what he was directed at the last recycling mission, because we, we openly told him, if you wanna get funded for it, that you have to give a present date, like, at least send us a letter, a request.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tuck it.
Yeah.
Number, do we have a number?
We don't, we don't really.
I'll reach out to him and tell him if he wants some money, he needs to send a request.
Yep, he was told at the last recycling meeting.
If we want this to happen and it's a huge event. We're all gonna have to throw in some money.
And I would always entertain as the vice chair of the Recycling Commission, if there's any volunteers that would like to participate. I know that I personally touched about thirty-eight hundred tires this past year, uh, Laura worked with people at the gate. Um, it's, it is, it's crazy to see how much stuff that we can get, uh, and actually what our biggest concern is, is tires, because it, they just keep coming.
Yeah.
Since you're talking about that, I, I just, are we any closer to being able to get rid of glass?
Um, there are some conversations, uh, obviously, um, big scope, uh, Laura and I boasted on that board. Um, we're currently, we're granted a, a one million dollar grant through Eagle. Um, the only one, only one place in the state to get a one million dollar distribution. Um, and that is still in the guise that we're been pushing for over all five years since we've both hopped on this, this board. Um, we are looking at, uh, the expansion, uh, through the county of a utilization of the, some, I believe, four lots out off of Airport Road, um, they're in the conversations of, um, infrastructure, uh, implementation, uh, which would also have a secondary response to economic development. Um, the, the facility, uh, itself is looking at a grand total of, uh, five point seven million dollar facility to increase our recycling capabilities. And a segue to your question, sir, is that, yes, um, we're actually having open conversations with Lafarge. I, as to the potentials of, uh, having a direct market for glass, because, um, the biggest caveat and limiting factor, um, to recycling glass effectively is the cost of logistics because of the sheer weight. Um, and if we can actually mitigate those costs by having, uh, utilization of a, a secondary market here in our hometown, um, those conversations have begun.
To include it in the cement making process?
I, I don't know the, the, the finite details as to, um, the processes therein, um, but yes, we're, that is a. Um but yes, we're that is a conversation that's that is ongoing. So we actually just had a presentation by uh Dura Vader, I believe. Anyways, um so they're they're looking at designing a conveyor belt system to hopefully implement a more steadfast uh non laborious way to sort all materials. But yes, the expansion of uh a lot of different markets are are the conversation now, yes.
I just wanted to touch base or touch on that too, the four lots out at the airport. Um we have been waiting, oops, for the um airport manager has been working with M dot Aeronautics to FAA same thing or what what the letter said M dot Aeronautics, but anyway to um make it so we can proceed with to make sure that they they approve of us building this building. And actually, it was um approved back in two thousand fourteen. So we don't have to wait for that. It's one more hump. We don't have to.
It's the same process that the county had to go through because of their proximity to the airport um for radar purposes that the jail had to go through was FAA permission.
Radar and and height restrictions.
We don't have to wait for that. I mean, that's done. So that's wonderful.
So that has already been accomplished and recycled. Yeah, so um it's I I'm excited about it. I would have to say that this is the most ground that we've made as an intergovernmental unit uh in all five years that we've served on that board um in the last twelve months. It's
It's exciting.
It's a lot of, lot of momentum. So um moving forward uh to Department uh seven zero one. Is the planning commission.
Who's the salary payable for that? Says four thousand dollars.
No, no, that is the board, sorry.
Oh, okay, that's the.
Apologies, that is just the.
Now with the next one now.
But but under salaries, it says payable one order.
That was.
That was then.
That was Lynn at one point.
Now it's zero.
Yes, trustee Paul.
So we're saying the planning commission, which I am a member of. Or we're paying that commission four thousand dollars a year.
By, yeah.
Considering what that commission and board does. That seems like a a pretty low figure. Uh not because I'm on that, but they make some pretty serious decisions and they do a lot of work. They should be.
Is there, but I I we had uh adjusted it uh in this current fiscal to five thousand dollars. We know that um coming into this upcoming year, outside of just uh the cases and potential amendments, I believe were, it may not be in this upcoming fiscal, uh but the subsequent um that will be starting the process of uh updating our master plan. So then there would be an inherent uptick in costs there because of additional meetings.
They're paid. Okay, so that obviously the number that could.
But we're also going to probably be throwing some of the CIP stuff at them too.
I I would, if if, is there a recommendation to go to five or higher?
I think that sounds reasonable.
I mean, they get paid the same per DM that.
They get paid fifty eight, but the board trustees gets paid sixty.
Okay, so but that's the same. We're just increasing. But I mean, it's still the same per DM. It's just.
When Norm's on the planning commission, those meetings still get paid out of Board of Trustees because he's So it's only for the six members on the planning.
So they get shafted by two bucks?
Yes, I don't.
But I've been doing an amazing job as secretary.
And you get paid out supervisor salary.
Cause I don't get paid. So that's a cost saving. So, you know, there's no every times, every time. So we have a recommendation to increase the salary be payable for zero one zero seven zero one seven zero two zero one zero two from four thousand to five thousand. Uh obviously, then all the other ancillaries will have to show uh corresponding increase. Any other discussion over Department seven zero one?
With the CIP this year, is that gonna incur any any legal, extra legal costs?
Well, we did vote to some costs on this year's budget for training for all of us, which you all included in if you want to see that, right?
We're, I'm waiting. I I think you have one more week to. Yeah, I think Steve, you have not responded. Have you checked your township email lately?
Yeah, but I don't.
Trustee Paul.
A notice to the planning commission people.
We've sent it again.
Good, gotta say.
I heard back from a few of them.
Are we getting some response? I have it down at one thirty to five.
Yes, on the twenty second.
Uh CIP training?
Yeah.
All right, I'll do it one.
It's one until four thirty, I think.
I have it on my calendar, one thirty to four.
What day again?
Twenty second, Tuesday the twenty second, beginning at uh one thirty. Okay, any other questions about planning question? Um moving forward. Because we're knocking on the door and I I would be my this will be the endpoint for today's exercise as we get close to public safety. Are there any other questions to the remaining?
For the recreation.
Trustee Paul.
Rails the trails. Actually get paid.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, that was a
Last year, I think.
An arduous process to say the least of tracking somebody down to say, take twenty thousand dollars. It's like a bank saying, hey, thank you for the deposit. Our our fees are gonna be greater than your deposit. Um but yes, we made that dispersal to get it off of our books because up until that point in time, uh it just sat lingering.
Yes.
As a commit, so.
So did the nature preserve send a request?
Uh they did not.
And what about Thunder Bay Island?
They did. They're actually gonna be on an upcoming agenda to give a presentation.
So I'd like to know what what do we, did we spend three thousand this year?
On Thunder Bay Island? I don't know if they've some, I I I don't know if they've submitted invoices. I don't.
What are we, what is the?
What was that? Sorry.
What what are the expenses out there that we pay?
Materials usually, I think what they've for restoration work. I I would have, we'd have to pull up what the invoices have been.
I think they usually send a request at the very end of our fiscal.
I already have. I have the letter and they've actually requested to give a presentation.
No, I meant the their for reimbursement, like if they have, they do, they do it at the very end of their fiscal.
But they they've actually asked to, we're gonna actually, I believe in March eighth, our first meeting in March, regularly scheduled meeting will actually have two presentations. Uh one being from here on Pines uh that did some coastal habitat work inside the township. Uh and then also, I think Jim DeRozier from the Island Group.
They're, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, why don't we take a little bit from Thunder Bay Island and give some to here on Pines?
They haven't requested anything. That that well, I guess we'll listen to their presentation. I mean, that's.
Cause don't they, they do the river. Sorry, right here on Pines, does the river?
They do all kinds of things. They have actually set up a SISMA, which is a coastal. I don't want, they're gonna give a whole. I actually uh wrote a letter of support for their invasive species work. But that's what they do a lot. That's maybe where you see them is like I volunteer. And by all means, uh I'll remind other trustees if they would like to hop in their waders and pull out a European frog bit from the river. It's an annual activity and it's awesome.
What is it, a plant?
It's an invasive plant species. That's what they do. A European frog bit, it's a, it's a miniature lily pad. If you go down to Sportsman's Island, that's where we've always done the cleanups there. Um they try to bring in kids, uh but we also have uh an exponential amount of invasive uh plant species. We have frag mighties in our coastal byways, we all along roadways.
Go to the podium and give us.
And it's I I could. Um we also have, I mean, basically every landscape designer that thought something was cool in the seventies is an invasive species in our our natural ecosystem, even to the point where uh over fifty percent of native cactile species are being driven out by an invasive cactile species, if not choked out by frag mighties. So. Purple, purple loose stripe, beautiful. Yep, yep, to to eradicate that, you actually have to dig up the root ball without utilizing uh a pesticide or an insect pesticide. Um you have to dig up a root ball that's the size of a medicine ball. Size of a medicine ball. I volunteered once on the north branch of the Asabo River and given the the median age of the other volunteers. You were, I I was the mule. Uh and that was the last time I've touched purple loose stripe. So.
As a, as a side note, uh and something that was very interesting, if going back to Thunder Bay Island uh issue. Those of you who want to go out to YouTube on the formation of the Great Lakes, it is a fascinating outlook on on that. And it's, and it starts and Lafarge and and next stop is Thunder Bay Island with some uh very, very unique historical aspects of it that date back millions of years.
Yeah, pretty cool. Yeah, and uh if uh for those of you who uh received the Alpine News and yesterday's news, I believe they've restarted the discussions of utilizing township properties for cruise ship utilization. Um and that is why we have implemented uh an ordinance that this board can actually put a cost uh for doing business on township properties. So those are conversations that are probably gonna be upcoming of what that looks like. Um part of the bigger picture is uh moving forward with uh the Bureau of Land Management uh that I've been working with over the past five years uh to uh transfer the remaining hundred and thirty acres of the north part of the Thunder Bay Island. And also the cost to um mitigate the liabilities of the existing boat house. Um that has been, the funding was secured last year. Um the window for the seasonal work out on an island is pretty short. So they missed the the weather window. Um so that is hopefully coming up into this fiscal. Uh I'm in hopes that we can finalize um removing the liability of the existing boat house and have the remaining acreage of that island conveyed to the township. So.
Didn't they put up a new um port dock?
No, that's that's one of the biggest issues.
That's part of the boat.
No. You can get to it.
I thought there's no doubt. Has there ever been a doubt?
It was a long time ago.
I was just curious.
It's and that's. That's one of the biggest.
And I think with an outboard, it's pretty hard to approach except in one special certain area.
There's a million ways.
What hotel is that?
Are there, are there any other comments over the general point? Otherwise, I I will save it as is, we'll, I will, before we meet again. Uh and of which I would like to uh schedule uh our next budget hearing date. Otherwise, we could schedule at our our next regularly scheduled meeting.
You did have a tentative date.
We have to have this submitted by when?
You did have the eight, cause it was gonna be our board meeting and then go into budget.
Yeah, and we can keep that if you, I mean, I didn't know everybody's schedules, so.
Well, the only comment I have, and since I'm liaising, if you will, with the South Shore folks, is we don't have anything in here for them. I know they're trying to.
They didn't send a request, right?
Well, they've been talking to us uh and uh we've had them in the budget in the past, so I'm gonna ask that that be included with the this point. We're focused on extending the bike path where it ends. I think of Island Drive to.
Island Drive to South Partridge Point, which, yeah, you and I sat down with. But do it, so it is, is it your recommendation to fund?
We've got funding for maintaining bike paths in here going.
Yeah. And they've always usually, because there's, I guess we can always come back to it.
They they won't be able to make the presentation.
They haven't, they've, right now, we're. They did, they don't know. So what uh Russ and I sat down with Larry Clark, was it last week?
Last Friday.
And and starting the conversation of of the potentials of the project um of extending the bypass uh from Island Drive to South Partridge Point um through the M dot Redway. Part of the processes and I've I've requested that they uh submit a letter to all the immediately adjacent properties that would be impacted and hosting a public input session. Um expanding that forum to a larger cross section of our population and kind of gauge the interest in that project and move forward accordingly. Um they've always uh, I think with their previous years expenditures, um a thousand or less dollars are put into their cleanup day. Um so I'll leave it to them to submit a request because right now it's in such a weird design.
Unfortunately, yeah, that that's, I don't know if there's any funds that will be going to the bike path extension this next year.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't.
There's probably some uh but the in terms of the cleanup and so on that they do I think they've always been funded for that and and should be, I think. They do a good job down there and they they had a lot of businesses cleaning up some of their stuff. And that takes time and effort at least. But the point is I don't think we should be left out.
Well, then by all means tell.
Their presentation probably won't be a doctor first, that's the issue.
Well, budgets are living documents, so we can always.
Well, at least to face, submit a request. For funds. I mean, I just think they should do that if recycling.
Yeah, and the only person that really, I guess, in in this line um is the nature preserve, but that's already township owned property.
Which one, what's?
The nature preserve, Missouri Bay.
Oh, okay. I was, I was trying to make sure.
The happiest places. Why don't you excuse yourself there, Clark? I I had a feeling that the ambient air temperature outside has probably increased. Getting back to the date of our next budget meeting. Are there any uh?
The gummy must have just kicked in.
Yeah, well, there you go. How many nanograms this? Fun topics. Uh is there?
You did have the eighth, we have.
Following our next board meeting, is that still an option for everybody? Okay, well then.
Eighth of February, right?
What time are you gonna start?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the agenda, how passive.
I can print out the.
I let's say, um. Our meeting? Well, then let's look at a subsequent date because I'd rather have positive conversation than have hangry people looking at looking at me with disdain, talking about. With disdain, talking about GLs.
Yeah.
To say, safe approach. Um. I I'm open to. Other opportunities.
One day's work for you guys.
Yeah.
What about the um?
You're the hardest to speak.
Eleventh of that week, that'd be a Friday.
A Friday.
Yeah, pick a different day.
In the afternoon, Thursday.
What are we doing, which part?
Uh, I would say we're gonna be hopping into uh the enterprise.
Are we, can we meet like early in the morning?
We could do it well. I can't on a Friday, or I don't want to.
Yeah.
I don't really want to on a Friday either.
Fridays.
I can do an afternoon, but.
We could.
He wants to do a Friday afternoon.
No.
Well, then, what about uh February tenth, the evening or the day of the chamber dinner? We could do.
What are you available?
So I could do Wednesday, Thursday, the next uh.
The tenth, you're not.
The sixteenth or seventeenth? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's on the tenth.
So what, what's?
How about the sixteen?
How about the sixteenth? What time works for you, Cash? Let's all work around Cash.
We can do anything.
I'm not.
Okay, afternoon for Cash, for Russ.
We got, I I'm already kind of.
On the sixteenth.
Steve and I are wrapped up in the morning, um and I'm already uh. Into something from two on, so my windows are.
Seventeenth and eighteenth, I have a medical thing that I'm gonna do, so I'll be gone.
So there's nothing in this upcoming week, the seventh through the eleventh. It's Friday.
The water department.
I don't need to be there, I mean.
But you wanna be here when we do the fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing water now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, are you okay if we meet the sixteenth without you?
Well, can we actually?
Sixteenth, then good.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, I mean the seventeenth. Oh, but you're not available the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, I have a, I've got an.
We can do it late morning, it's only gonna take us hour, hour and a half.
Just button, you know, the, uh, from.
So should we look at?
Hold on a second, that's eleven thirty.
Are we have anybody available at fifteen?
I'm available.
Fifteenth is good for me.
Fifteenth is okay.
It's okay.
What time?
But you're okay with that being.
What time of day with a two-hour block, let's just say, just roughly speaking, the two-hour block, not think that it will go that long, but we.
Anytime that.
Seem to have some very good conversations that.
You're on do morning?
Fifteenth though.
Um, fifteenth, that, wanna say like nine or ten?
Nine.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, you said nine?
Nine AM on the fifteenth, are we in agreement?
Ending about eleven.
Yeah, I would say easily by eleven, I would say easily eleven.
So is that all we're talking about?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Fifteenth and nine o'clock.
Fifteenth at nine AM will reconvene uh to discuss the enterprise fund. Um. Are there any other uh comments, this is?
Will we have the uh? Updates made?
I will, I will have them all plugged in for us.
I'll try to.
Probably before that date so that you can have it.
Yeah. I'll try to get some of the load of numbers plugged in there.
Okay, just email it to me. Or what, however you have it, that way I can implement it and get you everybody, uh what we've worked on, filled in to this point as a recommended budget. Um, this is a uh second opportunity for public comment, if there's any public comment online, please uh utilize the bottom task bar to raise your hand. Seeing no public comment, is there any further discussion amongst board, oh yes.
I just wanted to remind everyone, intergovernmental council is tonight from seven to nine at BA flex. Should be a good meeting, we haven't met in two years.
Yes, okay, um, if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion to adjourn, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same, meeting adjourned at two thirty-four.